Clocks say six o'clock. The one in the back does not, but my phone and iPad say six o'clock. So we'll call the meeting to order, the regular meeting, Port of Allen Commission. Start with the flag salute.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great flag for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So under our regular business items, we have consent agenda items, number two, action items, A through F. Need to approve regular meeting minutes of July 1st, 2019. Approve special meeting minutes of July 8th, 2019. Approve the financial reports from January through July 2019.
Chairman, I move that we accept the consent agenda items, A, B, and C.
I'll second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number three are our action items, A through F.
I'll make a motion that we approve action items for the voucher payments, A through F.
I'll second that.
Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Commissioner reports. Commissioner Scott, would you like to start?
If you want to go first, you can.
Well, I did attend the July 1st regular board meeting, the July 8th special meeting. Was not able to attend the seminar this month due to prior vacation commitments, so that was my month.
And I attended both the general meeting and the special meeting, and then I was able to attend the Suncadia meeting, which certain classes were pretty informative. Then I spent a day with Larry, Leanne, and Don at Allen Days.
Well, I, pretty much the same thing. Regular meeting, the special meeting, Allen Days, I did. Washington Public Ports Association Commission meeting. Went to the Tuesday Commission meeting, the fifth Tuesday Commission meeting. Brought a few little things about the roundabout and the, keeps wanting to call it the bypass, but you know, it's the new.
Great corridor.
Thank you. And that's, that's about it. Oh, did a, also North Mason Community Voice meeting, so.
Was not able to make Allen Days this year, but was it well attended?
I felt the attendance was lower than years past, and that was just, on Saturday, that was just counting how many pieces of salmon we sold. We had quite a bit of salmon left over, but we had beautiful weather, and everybody seemed to enjoy themselves. I didn't hear of any problems.
The dock was open?
Dock was open.
Yeah, kind of, it was impressive.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah, we had a booth for the Oyster House. We got quite a few donations.
Oh, good.
Yeah, so that was great. Goods.
And next on the agenda is the security officer's report. Travis?
Travis Merrill, Port Allen Security. Well, we had Allen Days, of course, which we, they hire security for, so I just kind of meet with him every night and make sure that things go. The name's Frank, I believe. He's a good guy, I like him. We also had the Fourth of July event where we didn't have any incidents. Did have somebody down on the North Shore thinking that they could light off fireworks again. Almost every year, somebody will be down there and thinking that they can just pull up and party. So I made it known that they were mistaken, and if they wanted to come down here to Allen, that they could light off their fireworks, and they, they elected not. They just kind of packed everything up. Other than that, we've had quite a bit of activity, of course, being summertime. My report stated there was some pretty interesting traffic down on the, on the North Shore, that I was able to kind of figure out that they were not the people we wanted around, and asked them to leave. Got extra information from the neighbor, Earl Eddings, about the fact that they'd been down there quite a bit. Got their license plate, but they changed cars so often that it's really hard, and by the time, you know, you would call the cops, they're completely gone for any kind of trespass. So I can remember their faces and continue to try to keep them out of the area. And, let's see here. Had a little bit of activity with somebody wanting to actually anchor their boat out front and kind of live in it, so to speak. He approached me, and he said he had talked to the office, and I told him I didn't think that was a good idea, and he'd have to talk to Larry, of course. Both Larry and I kind of talked about it, and we were both on the same page before we even started. Please, no, thank you.
He wanted to keep his car here.
Yeah, he wanted to keep his car here, try to see if he could find out some way to just kind of pay an annual pass deal to park, and that's, we really don't want that. We've got two boats in the bay right now that don't really belong there, we don't need them. That's about all.
Travis, I want to say thank you very much.
Sure.
July 3rd, took the family out to watch the Alderbrook fireworks.
Mm-hmm.
And as a recipient of two of your memos.
Yes, yes, I am good at memos.
I appreciate that, and all the other people. I get here, one bit of grumbling when they saw what was on the windshield.
Sure.
Hopefully, they pay us back, so. But I want to thank you. It was, it was so nice to see you, and I told my wife, I said, "This is great." I think all the boats were coming in about 12 o'clock at night, and so.
Yep.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
And the more we can possibly get into a camera scenario down there, the better off we're going to be for collecting fundage, because I was down there here yesterday, and a gentleman that I see back and forth on the North Shore quite often with his speedboat, and kind of an old, older, broken-down car, he's kind of dragging it with, looking like mine, an old Crown Vic. He's down there all the time, and I had to basically tell him, you know, "I see you're loading up, did you pay?" "Oh, oh, no, all I have is a 20." Like, "So?" "We've got a pay station there, you could use your card if you'd like, sir." "Oh, I don't have my card." "Well, I guess you owe us 20 bucks." And begrudgingly handed over the $20, but I drove down there today, and I saw him on the North Shore driving back from, from where the boat launch would have been. And I didn't see any kind of payment for, that would indicate his vehicle, so of course he used it again without paying.
Yeah.
It's tough.
Yep, I really appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
I was grateful.
Thanks, Travis.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Executive Director's report.
All right, water system issues. Not much new to report here. We implemented the new rates with the July billing. I wrote a letter to go in the bills explaining why the rates had increased, as well as explaining that we had conducted a public hearing and only two people attended. We haven't had any feedback, good or bad, from customers. Nothing new to report on the potential new connections mentioned over the past couple of months, other than getting a call from the county confirming the water availability letter for a permit. We did have a request from a Mr. David Spandell about providing water service to the building that he owns that houses North Bay Marijuana. In a conversation we had a couple of weeks ago, I explained that we are not in a position to extend a water line almost a mile to service one customer. Also explained his options to him. Basically, he could pay for the extension, whether we did it, or he had a private contractor do it, so he could create a newcomer agreement, try to recoup some of his cost. Last week, he called me again, and he was quite combative, accusing us of refusing to provide service, which we haven't done. The main problem he has, as I understand it, is that he has an existing will the county won't allow and be used for commercial purposes, but will allow for residential use. That's why he approached us. Rather than continue to engage with him, I ended the phone call and sent him a letter once again explaining his options. Put a copy of the letter in your meeting packets, and I also forwarded a copy to the county commissioners, so they wouldn't be blindsided by any accusations he may make against them or us. Finally, we had our five-year water system audit on Friday. Steve Holloway was here, and he and Don worked with the inspector from the county. They looked at our plan, looked at our testing documentation, as well as physically inspected all of our facilities and equipment. They didn't find any major issues, and only one minor one that we need to document with a photograph and send to them. We won't have the written results for a while yet, but we aren't anticipating any problems. Here at community utilities proposal, nothing really new to report on this. In talking to Jeff Carey, we decided the best path forward is to have the system appraised. Finding someone who actually does these kind of appraisals has been the holdup. Mr. Carey brought up the point that if there is state money available for larger systems to purchase smaller systems, that is a state agency funding the purchase determine the value. Good question. However, WPPA had a legislative committee conference call last week, which as a member of that committee, I participated in. This very subject came up, and I asked James Thompson, the interim director, to get me some additional information on where we can find money for this kind of acquisition. Mr. Carey and I will chat some more as information becomes available. Property purchase, we've basically reached an agreement with the sellers. I've enclosed a copy of the comparison estimated proceeds they would receive by selling to us versus selling on the open market at that price, at their price. What made the deal work was including six months of rent and counting that against the proceeds. I've included that comparison in your meeting packet. On Thursday, I received a milestone report from Kim Sellers at RCO, basically outlines what steps we have to take from here and in what order. They would like the property acquisition to close by September 30th, so I have some things to get done between now and then to schedule that. Dock issue, the new dock is complete and in place. I also believe we're getting close to a settlement with Endurus. I had a conversation with the attorney this morning, and she said that she had sent an email to them saying, "Where are we at here?" And Endurus replied that they were hoping to have some news by the end of the week, so. Endurus had originally made us an offer of $19,855.50 was what Tim Zech had bid for the replacement, minus our $1,000 deductible. As you know, we rejected that offer. We originally asked for the entire cost of the dock repair, $37,768, plus the cost of new floats for half of the center section, a little over $9,000. Where we are is that Endurus has admitted it has some responsibility, but it says it appears the marine floats bid was a substantial upgrade from what we had, and it is. However, permitting demands that we build the replacement dock to meet current code requirements, and Zech's bid was a simple replacement of what was there, not one that met current code. Accounting for some of the difference in cost is the composite decking and grading. The grading is required by law to allow natural light into the water. The composite is used because treated wood is no longer allowed for overwater construction. Endurus' approach appears to be to pay us something for the dock, perhaps Tim Zech's bid plus the cost of the required upgrades, and at least that's what the attorney thinks that's the direction they're going. And an additional amount under our business interruption policy, in which case we documented about $9,000 in losses, and the balance in whatever cost we can negotiate for the replacement. I'm hopeful this will come to a conclusion soon, as our Endurus policy is up for renewal, and our legal fees are continuing to mount as we deal with this, so. Copier lease, the lease on our copier is up. We need to either buy it at market value or get a new one on a new lease, which is our preferred option. We're evaluating proposals now, but our goal is to try to find a machine that fits our needs, includes the technology advances that have taken place between the time we got this machine five years ago, and what's now available, and does it for the least cost. We're trying to hold it as close to what we currently pay as possible, and it looks like we're going to be close to that. Recycle station, Commissioner Jackson has requested that we put the idea of setting up a recycle station here at the park on the agenda for discussion and potential action. Mason County Garbage offers a 96-gallon bin that will accept paper, aluminum, and plastic, but no glass, or a 96-gallon bin that you can put everything in except paper. There's a one-time delivery fee of $11, and it's picked up either once a month at a cost of $1,834, or every other week at $23 a month, or weekly for $3,105. So that's on the agenda for discussion. Security issues, we're looking into what it will take to install some kind of high-resolution wireless remote camera system here at the park, as well as the Hitt Canal Boat Launch and Marina. There are systems available that'll transmit images from multiple cameras in multiple locations and store them in the cloud for any necessary law enforcement documentation. I went to the place in Tacoma called 25-7 Security, as they appear to be the largest security equipment provider in the area. When I got there, there was a letter on the door saying the owners had decided to close the business and retire. It was two hours of traffic to get there and three hours to get back. They'd been advertising on the radio just two weeks before, so. I've asked Intellisystems to give us a price on what we need, and have an appointment with them tomorrow to evaluate our needs and give us a bid. Then when I have an amount, I'll go look for grant money. Request for mortgage, Denota Seafoods has asked for permission to anchor their barge out in the cove by the North Shore launch. I have an appointment with them tomorrow to look at the dock and get an idea of exactly how big the barge is, where they want to anchor it. They're offering to pay us to do this, so I want to at least look at it and see what it is, and see if there'll be any issues with them. 3D building acquisition, nothing new to report on this. However, North Mason Resources is very interested in partnering with this, on us with this if we can put a deal together with Washdaw. I've reached out to our legislators once again about this, and asked them to see if they can help us acquire this in an intergovernmental transfer. I've also included it on our SEDS request form for the EDC. Meeting date change, our next meeting falls on Labor Day, so we need to change the meeting date. After talking with Commissioner Cooper, because of schedule conflicts he has, as well as myself, the rest of that week, we've originally proposed rescheduling it for September 9th, Monday after Labor Day at our regular time. Commissioner Jackson has said he is available for this, although Commissioner Scott is not. This is on the agenda for discussion. WPPA meeting schedules, next up is the environmental seminar, September 26th and 7th in Shalane. While the agenda hasn't been published, we've made reservations for the commissioners and myself, so we can get rooms reserved. You can always cancel if someone can't make it, or the agenda doesn't particularly pertain to us. After that is a small ports meeting in Leavenworth, October 24th and 25th. We've made reservations for everyone, so we can do the retreat there as well. However, the hotel is booked solid for Friday night, so our options are to move to another hotel in town and stay all night, or just leave when we're done and face Friday night Seattle traffic. Last meeting of the year is the annual meeting, which is November 20th to 22nd at the Hotel Murano in Tacoma. As usual, we'll make reservations for everyone. Retreat, we previously discussed doing the retreat at the small ports meeting. Need to discuss future projects and the update to our comprehensive scheme. Like to know if any of you have specific subjects you'd like to discuss, so we can develop the agenda. Vacation, I will be taking vacation time this month from 13th through 21st. Bryce and I are doing another baseball show. Totem issue, totem pole issue, nothing new to report on this. Would you like me to report on old business? Transit mortgage expansion project, now that the new dock is in place, we're moving forward on this. Marine floats did an outstanding job and had the new dock in place for Allen Days as they promised. Marine floats has pre-wired and pre-plumbed sections of the new dock. The electrician will put the pedestals in place when they arrive and hook them up. We did have a glitch there, however. I'd ordered the pedestals, and they were supposed to arrive last Wednesday before, or the Wednesday before Allen Days. I called the vendor on Thursday when they didn't show up, and he told me they weren't going to be able to fulfill the order, because they were still waiting on their UL certification. When I originally talked to him in Newport three months ago, he said the certification was a week out, two at the most. So I ordered them from another vendor and expect delivery shortly. They shipped on Thursday. The invoice is included in the vouchers for you, or that you did approve. Also, the proposal from Bend Tech for the second pay machine got lost in cyberspace and had to be resold last week. This wasn't discovered until I called in, inquire about delivery as well. However, there's an upgrade to the machine that'll allow us to record license numbers for annual passes, which will make issuing annual passes a lot easier for us. Delivery is about three weeks out, but if we can get the kiosk where it'll be located, built before it gets here, we can put it in place directly off the truck. The electrician has given us a revised bid that upgrades to, upgrades to the service equipment from simply standard watertight enclosures to stainless steel. Stainless is called out in specs in some of the equipment, but not all. Since all of this will be located outside in a saltwater environment, as an electrician in another life, I believe this upgrade is a very prudent, long-term choice. This revised bid is on the agenda for approval. There's also a resolution on the agenda giving me the authority to sign this contract, since it exceeds my spending authority. In a conversation I had with Commissioner Cooper, we discussed the idea of a special resolution that will give me authority to spend up to a specific predetermined amount on Marina and Oyster House projects only. Otherwise, we either need to have resolutions approved in a public meeting for every item that exceeds my spending authority, like tonight for the electrical contract. Upcoming before the next meeting will be one to approve almost $13,000 for the pay station purchase. So depending on the timing of our regular meetings and the immediate need for something, could require special meetings and resolutions for me to exceed my usual spending authority on these items. This too is on the agenda for discussion, along with proposed Resolution 404. Sweetwater Park, nothing new to report on this, other than we figured out we sent the signed paperwork to RCO. Over talking to RCO, they forwarded the grant transfers, but there's paperwork we need from the school district we still don't have. I've called in the superintendent, but she's apparently been on vacation. The school's starting soon, I'll be able to touch base with her shortly and get this off my plate. Our department, Oyster House, our Department of Commerce grant manager has left the department. A new one hasn't been appointed yet, but before she left me, she asked me to submit some additional paperwork, which we did. Specifically, the deed to this property and the paperwork transferring the Oyster House to us, along with proof of insurance, which Endurus has provided. I met previously with Bonnie Knight to set up a scheduled task to be performed on stabilization using the drawings Mike Ross did. Since Mike draw, Mike's drawings are not stamped by a licensed engineer, also forwarded them to Art Anderson and association, asked them to review them and make changes we'll need, so we can get them stamped and get this out to bid ASAP. However, Art Anderson's price for doing this was $36,000, which I thought was way out of line. So I called Pat McCullough to see if he was interested in doing this. He's been a great help. One idea he came up with for the stabilization was to call Nichols Brothers, firm that moved the building here, because they have the equipment to jack up the building and the ability to replace the rotten 12-by-12 beams underneath. Replacing those beams has been a stumbling block for other contractors we've talked to. So waiting on a price from them, we're all meeting on Wednesday to figure that out. We may have also found a contractor, Skip Parker, the same guy doing the renovation of the Betzinger's house next door. Zephyrus is willing to partner with him, acting as contractor, allowing him to be covered under their bond of insurance. I'll have more on this as we move forward. I also had a conference call this afternoon with the Department of Commerce, the State Historical Society, and we were supposed to have the Department of Architecture and Historic Preservation, but they were not on the call. Bonnie Knight, Pat McCullough, Judy, and myself, to get everyone on the same page about which grant money is paid for what work. I think we had a very successful call when it was all done. Criminalization of Marina rules, nothing new has happened, although Commissioner Jackson has continued to work on this. Perhaps having another all ports meeting depress this issue in conjunction with the other ports may get us somewhere. And finally, all ports meetings, the last meeting was July 29th at the Port of Brownsville. Summer meeting is always a potluck barbecue, which was fun and well-attended. James Thompson, the WPPA interim executive director, attended, and was our primary guest speaker.
That's some kids' apple. Kids' apple.
Yeah, that was kids' apple.
Just had one, one comment about the totem pole. Since we have James Kelsey willing to bring a boom truck down and.
George Kenny?
George Kenny, I was wrong, called Frank. George Kenny.
I always, I do the same thing. Yeah.
He'll come down and make an evaluation. He believes the inside of it's going to be more rotten than it is savable. I'm willing to cut it, I'm sure Don can cut it, but all we've got to do is chop it off at the, as low to the ground as possible, lower it to the ground.
Well, it's, it's sitting on a concrete pedestal, so.
So if it's, you know, if it's unsalvageable, then we can talk about what we want to put there in its place.
Okay.
Originally, I would think that maybe another chainsaw carving from George.
Also, I had a request yesterday from someone at the Allen Days Festival to, or not Allen Days, the birthday celebration, to have you come and grind out that stump.
Yeah. Yeah, they're wondering if anybody does that around here.
No, she mentioned you specifically.
That's nice. Dare I ask who it was?
I don't know her name.
Start with Heidi. Because every time we visit the park, she tells me I need to come do that.
No, it wasn't Heidi.
Great, so moving into new business.
Yeah.
So we have, under new business, approved Resolution 402, contract for electrical installation. We need to discuss it and pass it. Is the paper copy close? Paper copy of the resolution?
No, I. Yeah, it should be, right here.
Oh, which we need to sign.
Yeah, because they've got to be stamped. Of course, it's something about. But there's three resolutions here.
Would you like me to read the?
Yes, please.
Resolution 402?
Resolution.
Yeah, what we are.
Number 402.
What we're talking about is a resolution of the Port of Allen Commission on the subject of approving, which is a typo, by the way, a contract for electrical upgrades at the Allen Marina, whereas the Port of Allen has awarded a capital budget appropriation in the amount of $364,720 for the transient mortgage expansion project at the Allen Marina. Whereas the project to move forward, approval for the commission of a bid from Georgia's Electric in the amount of $98,735 must take place. So, therefore, be it resolved at the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence, hereby accepts a bid submitted by Georgia's Electric, which is listed on the MRFC, or Municipal Research and Services Corporation website, as a qualified contractor and who was the lowest bidder on this con, on this project. The Board hereby agrees to authorize its executive director to enter into negotiations with Georgia's Electric and sign a contract for the required work as per estimate 16267963 for electrical work on the transient mortgage expansion project.
What was the typo?
It says approving, at least on what I see here.
Yeah, it's A-B-P-R-O-B.
So with a spelling correction on the resolution, we have a motion for approval.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 402.
I'll second it.
There is a motion and a second on approving Resolution Number 402. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. On to approve Resolution Number 403, enter into negotiations for property purchase.
Want me to read that?
Sure.
Go ahead. Whereas in 2016, the Port of Allen requested a first right of refusal to purchase a specific parcel of property that adjoins the waterfront park, if and when it should come to market parcel, and it gives the parcel numbers, located at 18512 East State Highway 3, Allen. Whereas in July of 2019, the owners, Michelle and Denise Mitchell, excuse me, Mitchell and Denise Ogrin, agreed to sell the property to the Port of Allen for the sum of $286,000 and six months of additional occupancy after closing, to be credited at the rate of $1,200 per month. Whereas the sale of this property shall close escrow on or before September 30th, 2019. Furthermore, the Port of Allen agrees to allow the Ogrins to occupy the property for six additional months after closing, and credit them at the rate of $1,200 per month, which is calculated as part of the total sale price of said property. The Port of Allen has been awarded a grant from the State of Washington Recreational and Conservation Office in the amount of $500,000 for acquisition of this specific parcel and redevelopment of it as a staging area for its existing boat ramp. ramp. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence, has agreed to approve this purchase, the Board hereby agrees to authorize its executive director to enter into negotiations with Mr. and Mrs. O'Gran to execute a purchase and sale agreement for an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty thousand, including the credit for the six-month rent.
Entertaining a motion for Resolution number four zero three.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution four zero three.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Discussion on project-specific additional spending authority, Resolution four zero four.
Same thing?
Yes.
Whereas the Port of Allen has two grant-funded projects in progress, the Sergeant Oyster House Restoration Project and the Transient Mortgage Expansion, Expansion Project, that each require the purchase of goods and services that exceed the Declaration of Authority issued to its executive director on November twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen. Whereas currently, all purchases and contracts that exceed the Declaration of Authority have to be approved individually by the Port of Allen Board of Commissioners via resolution. For efficient and timely completion of grant-funded projects, it may be necessary from time to time for the executive director to sign contracts and approve purchases of goods and services, as well as transfer monies between Port of Allen fund accounts for amounts that exceed the Declaration of Authority. Whereas the Port of Allen has been awarded capital budget appropriations by the Washington State Legislature in the amount of three hundred and sixty-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars, excuse me, for the transient mortgage expansion project at the Allen Marina and two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars for the Sergeant Oyster House Restoration Project. Now there before, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners, after duly considering all relevant evidence, hereby agrees to authorize its executive director to enter into negotiations with vendors, sign contracts, purchase goods and services, and transfer monies between Port of Allen fund accounts for the Sergeant Oyster House Restoration and Transient Mortgage Expansion projects only, that exceed the Declaration of Authority dated November twenty-third, two thousand and eighteen, but do not exceed the amount of one hundred thousand dollars. And a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution four zero four.
I'll second it.
Just a, a little discussion, we just thought that it was going to be, you know, the money's there, it's been awarded, and for us to have to get together every time there's more than a ten thousand dollar purchase was just going to be really tough on us with these big projects, so.
Yeah.
And I, I put the thing in there about transferring funds because, you know, we get reimbursed.
Yes.
But we've got to front the money, so we might have to move money, you know, from one to the general fund, but we also, that also gives me authority to move it back.
Yes.
So mo, motion has been made and seconded to approve Resolution number four zero four. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you, you've made my line, D D.
Yeah. Item D on new business is setting up a recycle station on port property with potential action. Commissioner Jackson?
This is my thought. During this, well, during Allen Days, I saw Mr. Siproff going through the garbage, picking out recyclable items on, on his own, which is very commendable. You know, for him to volunteer his time to go through that, it's, I really appreciate it. So when we have these events here at the park, like we did in the city, we had pop-up recycle centers that our Public Works got purchased, and there were plastic bags. Now we're talking about what the executive director looked at as a permanent recycling center here. In the summertime, we can use it. In the wintertime, I'm afraid that we're going to get garbage thrown in there, and it's not going to be, you can't monitor those things twenty-four seven. So what my idea was, is that whenever we have events, weddings, anything in the park, we have portable recyclings centers that we can just set up. And this is what we used in the city. It took all of, all of thirty seconds to set them up. They were separate, they looked nice, they were plastic bags, one for bottles and cans, the other one for trash. And, and then we could, we can go with getting a recycled bin through Mason County and have it, Mason County garbage and have it brought out when we have the big events, so. So what I envisioned is that we'd set, we'd purchase those on our own, purchase the bags, store them. I think this park, if we were to have ten in here, that's more than enough. And then for like Allen Days, we have, we just entered an agreement with Mason County, I just did it up for Lakeland's golf tournament. They'll bring the receptacle out, we can just dump it right in that recycle receptacle, they'll haul it off that Monday or Tuesday, whatever their schedule is, we pay for that instead of paying the monthly fee and the delivery and all that stuff.
As needed, yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you for that.
Instead, you know, we used to have recycle.
I know.
And it was a disaster.
It was a disaster. I locked the keys in my car.
So.
Yeah, that's good, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, especially for the events.
So if you don't mind.
Yeah.
Larry, I'll, I'll write this up, I'll send it to you. And then I'll, I just need to make one more phone call to Mason County Garbage and see how much it costs for them to bring a recycle bin out here, so, especially for Allen Days.
Do you want a motion for that yet?
Let me write it up.
Yeah, I was going to say, I don't know that it would be necessary that Larry would just kind of execute that when Mason County Garbage Region purchased it under his authority. Anything else on that? Now have Jennifer Beria, Executive Director, Mason County EDC. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, you're a patient.
I appreciate, I was trying to come last month, but had an emergency in the family, so I appreciate being able to reschedule this. And for you letting me come in and be able to talk with you, we've been doing these kind of every month in different organizations to really get the word out about what it is that we're doing. So please let this be a back and forth. If you have any questions, shout them out, I'm happy to answer. But I guess the most important, number one thing that we've just opened is the Seds list. You all should have received the email stating that the projects list is now open for new project submittals and update of any current projects or old projects that need to come off of that. So that projects list really gives the county an idea of what's going on, how we can partner together, and really helps those funding organizations see what is a priority here in our community. So it helps them be able to not necessarily look at things as if they're a competition, but be able to look at, at where we can do things together. If we have a water line going in somewhere and fiber comes in, a year later, you have to dig up the same area. So it really is kind of helping streamline those infrastructure projects that we have in the community. So the deadline that we've put on that is September third. After that, the, the projects get prioritized based on financial readiness. That then goes to our committee, they review it, and then we approve it at the EDC level, and then it gets approved at the county level. It is a very open process, so if there's a project that you guys have that is either not ready to be on the list, or is on the list, but it ends up being lower, that list can shift. All it takes is a request into the county once it's been approved from the county, to either add a project on, to reprioritize, to move those around, to make them better optically for those funding partners. So just as a heads up, we've got a month, so let's get those projects in. My staff, Corin Leaf and I have both attended, we've been focused on doing some trainings for areas that we want to really grow in our organization. And one of those is business retention and expansion. Our local businesses are what are going to make and, or break our community here. So what we have set up really is the start of a pretty robust business retention and expansion program. It's how do we highlight our businesses? How do our businesses know that we're there, and how can we help those businesses? We have, last year, it started middle of last year, we met with close to a hundred and thirty businesses, and out of those hundred and thirty, forty of them needed immediate assistance. They didn't know where to turn. So this really is, at the start of it, is really information-based. Let's, it might not be us that can help, but we know where to send them. Another section of that that we've been doing is our business spotlights. We started those at the beginning of last year as well, and we've had such an amazing response. And the businesses that have been spotlighted have had an increase in business as well. So it's nice to see that, that kind of deliverable and bonus just being moved forward. What we are doing to help really build on that is we do, are doing some marketing redevelopment. Our website is getting redeveloped, there will be a page for those business spotlights. So you'll be able to say, you know, I think I heard something about Stretch Island. You can go to our website, click on that, and find out the latest information that we've had, and that can link you to other, other reports that we've seen. So really kind of a way to promote our businesses passively, since we have over forty-two hundred businesses in our county, we're not going to get to all of them every year. So how can we keep that momentum moving forward without always have to actively being the touch point to them? So there, there will be banners on the front page with our partners, Port of Allen being one, there will be places that will highlight the current week spotlight. You'll be able to see the different places that you can get assistance. We have had fifty-two spotlights this year so far, twenty-four business visits, and sixty businesses reaching out for assistance. So we're at the half-year point, and we've reached most of what our goals are for those numbers, which means next year we get to set them higher and really push ourselves. The next leg of what it is that the EDC do really focuses on recruitment. Business retention is kind of the foundation, recruitment is that happy spotlight. It takes a lot of work, but when it happens, that's what gets most of the publicity, which is what we're trying to shift focus on with our BRE program as well. But we have had fifteen requests for proposals, all of which we've been able to submit sites in our area for. About half of those are here in the Belfair Allen area. You guys do have some excellent land opportunities, and with the freight corridor project moving forward, there is a land that is opening up for development. So those projects that don't need to start in January, that can start later, those are really focused up here in Belfair. We have had twelve conversations with hotel developers, and we have had four site visits. So we, at the end of last year, beginning of this year, we completed a hotel feasibility study. It shockingly said Mason County needs hotels. We all know it, but we had never had the study that showed the me, the metrics and the measurements to those developers. We were able to procure funds to go ahead and do the study, and from that consultant that we hired, he has been amazing at helping connect us up to different developers, different franchises that are interested in being in the area. We've got some major drivers in our area for tourists. We get close to, if I add it up right in my head, close to two hundred thousand visitors into our area each year, and that is set to be even more, if not doubled, next year. The Ridge Motorsports is a big driver, and they have been awarded their first national event, which will take place next year as well. So you're going to see quite a bit of influx. And so now with those drivers, some of the work that we need to do is how do we connect those drivers that have been kind of, you know, head down, move forward, I've got to get these events, I've got to figure out how they work, how do we connect them with our businesses so that Olympia is not the receiver of those dollars, or Bremerton is not the receiver of those dollars, that we're able to keep those in Mason County and really reap those benefits? So there's quite a bit of work that's going to go into building up that network to help our tourist-based businesses really thrive, not just in the summer months, because as it's beautiful, it kind of promotes itself, but how do we, on those other months, pull people in?
Jennifer, I was just wondering, in a nutshell, you could talk about the proposal that the Kitsap Raceway had, and kind of the EDC's role in making sure that the Mason County Raceway was protected during that.
Sure, I appreciate that. Excellent segue. So the, the Port of Bremerton has been backing a project called Circuit of the Northwest, and it is essentially, if you read over their proposal, it is essentially a carbon copy of the Ridge Motorsports. Slightly smaller, less dynamic, but it covers road course, motocross, outdoor facility, skid pad for drifting, if that's what you want to do, some dirt bike trails. It pretty much mimics what it is that the Ridge does. And since the Ridge is a major driver for tourism in our area, we were asked to help, and we're happy to help them kind of protect that interest that we have here. So the Kitsap Facilities District, Kitsap Public Facilities District opened their process, they're able to bond for money to help with public facilities. In that process, it was, it received seven projects, one of those, all of those, six of those projects were public projects. The Circuit of the Northwest is a private business seeking public funds. Really to kind of focus in, what they showed in their proposal was to focus in on, you know, the emergency vehicle trainings that could happen, the public use of the, that facility, that's what they were going after funding for. The proposed site that they were putting it on was within half an hour drive of the Ridge Motorsports. It, in my estimation, essentially wanted to use public funds to compete with private funds and private business. What ended up happening was we, we attended a good two months of their public meetings to really help them understand what it is that the Ridge does, how close the Ridge is. And I think really the point that was driven home was, what they're asking to do is publicly fund a private organization. And that was against what those mandates were. And we showed them that it is able, perfectly able to be able to, to be privately funded. So it, it's a matter of attending quite a few meetings, and they released their rankings, that project fell fourth, and we think that it won't hit the funding. The funding baseline, essentially, I think the top three projects will end up being funded and that one won't. So the impact is, is that motorsports really is kind of a, an interesting thing to watch, and there's a lot of money that goes into it with owners into their cars. There are not a lot of events that are specifically motorsports. So you really have to diversify your business plan. The Ridge does EVOC training as well, but they also do, they've just, are almost finished completing their training center, which will host events. You can do graduation out there, they've already had four weddings called for dates. So they are looking to open some outdoor event space to be able to house Oyster Fest or some of the larger festivals that we've lost over the years that we can go back, now that they've, they've got that opportunity. They do have a company that focuses on corporate events, it can be year-round, that you essentially get to come out and play in the, the big equipments, like it's a sandbox, and, and figure out how to move those around. They also offer certification that you need to be able to operate those. So really looking at that as a whole, you have to, to really diversify. Otherwise, if you just go head-to-head on events, you're competing for the same events, especially within a half an hour's distance. So you're looking at that facility dividing the focus from our facility, and that would dramatically cut down on the number of visitors that we have, which would impact our lodging tax dollars, which would impact our hotel site developers. They, they all watched that process with some consternation. I, I can't remember if the last time I was here, we talked about opportunity zones, but we are moving forward with a landowners meeting for the two opportunity zones that we have. None of those opportunity zones covers Belfair or Allen, but it is a process that I think that you should become acquainted with, because when it sunsets, there's quite a bit of speculation that it won't actually sunset, it will become its own tax incentive by itself. And with that would come a different. And with that would come a different set of parameters for choosing your, your tracts of land. This, this, last year when they did it, it was census tracts, and Belfair didn't meet the minimum parameters for it. So, as it moves forward, it could. So, it's definitely investors' opportunity that we need to keep an eye on. So, as it moves forward, I'll keep you updated. Just really quick, so I don't take up too much more time, we just did our seventh annual business plan competition, and we are very happy that the North Mason School District has reached out and asked that we make it a countywide event. So, next year, 2020, will be our first countywide business plan competition for our students. So, this year, we were able to send six students to the Washington Business Week, which puts you through quite a rigorous build-your-own-business. They've also added job shadowing, which gives you the opportunity to really, you know, think about a career that you want to go into and, and potentially test the boundaries of it. So, that's EDC in a nutshell. So, you'll start to see a few changes, and I'm just going to go ahead and add you guys to the new email blast that will come out of the website, so if you don't want to, let me know. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have a discussion of WPPA port trustee position.
Yes, as you know, I got selected to be a, a person to help on the, the executive director selection. Yeah. And you're a trustee.
Yes.
And Don Meyer, who is the President of Washington Public Ports Association, had said, had mentioned that in order for the selection committee, they're all trustees on the selection committee. So, he was asking if I could be trustee.
Yeah, how's the?
No problem with me. I mean, it's, it's one meeting a year that we go to anyways.
Right.
And it looks like there's an extra piece of responsibility with the selection committee, but do we know what the process is? We just, do I have to resign from it and we appoint you, or we just switch?
Just appoint, you just say that you're going to appoint me instead of you.
Well, I would move that we appoint Judy to the WPPA trustee position for the rest of the year.
And I'll second.
All right. Thank you.
What's your maiden seconded? All those in favor?
I'll say aye. I just want to add too, the selection, there's 30 applicants.
I just saw that.
Yeah. It's just amazing.
Isn't that something?
We current, our interim is very qualified as well, but it's kind of amazing how many people have applied for the executive director position, which Eric Johnson, you know, is no longer there, so, thank you.
Good, yeah.
All right, we'll open it up for public comment. Come on up.
I'm Bonnie Knight, the President of the North Bay Historic Society. Just following up on what Larry said in his report, Judy and I met with Pat on that phone call today, and the main, the main thing was to try to clarify, because there was some, a lot of crossover in the early documents. They wanted to clarify who's got responsibility for this and this, so that they could put it in the contracts clearly. And I took the liberty of typing out what they said, just to sort your world around a little bit. And one of the things that realized was that the port, they're going to do the Schilling stuff, but, and it was phased out for purposes of legislation and that. But we don't really need to stop if we have enough money to keep going on restoration. So, that's how they split it out in the contract. Anyway, that's how they split it out in the, they're going to split that out in the two, two different contracts. It was a good meeting, and Pat has some really good ideas, and he's been working with some early contractors and that. So, you know, go ahead and work with them to get the stuff put together and think, what I understood was that we're going to go ahead and do the planning for the building, get that done, so that we can continue and move ahead this fall and do the, do the restoration part of it. At the last meeting, we talked about, we have to have some kind of a recognized agreement, and you guys said okay, on, you know, working together in the long-term management of the building. So, if we could get something written down to say, yeah, it's okay for us to work on the building, that would be, that would be really important.
That's something else I need to do, I just haven't got to.
Yeah. Yeah, and I'm still working on the documentation of expenses and that. It would be really easier if we could do a listening before, but it doesn't seem to look out that way. But it, it, one of the things that we did change was the demolition of the.
Launch ramp.
Launch ramp. Yeah, and there was, there was some confusion on that, because we already have volunteers that would do it, thereby saving the port $30,000. And that gives Larry $30,000 more to work on this part of it. So, that's what's going to be getting written in the contract too. So, if there's any questions, if we can get those things taken care of. They said that we could con, we could get our contract done pretty quickly to be able to move forward with that. Judy and I are meeting on Wednesday with nickel brothers and that, so we can get the contracts going, you know, get the agreement made. And then we're working on Friday, we're meeting with Pat and Larry again on Friday, to kind of keep sorting things out, so we can get something in writing and get going.
Sure. Get moving forward finally.
Yeah, because we can do so much more, because we've got money, more than enough money to do that first phase. And because Pat said it could take like 18 months to get the port permit, we, there's no reason for us to not continue on that. And the original Army Corps agreement was that the work was to be done over the ground and not over the water. But because of the way that it was split out, it looked like we couldn't do anything more, but we can, we can go ahead and continue working. So, and we got volunteers ready to do it as soon as the contractors parts are done. Then there's other things that the volunteers could do until there's another part that the contractors have to do, if that's okay with you guys. Because it's, it's a lot of matching money, and it really helps, helps keep the cost down. And if we end up with money left over, we can throw it towards finishing stuff up on the, up in the pier.
Great.
If that makes sense to you guys.
It does.
Thanks, Bonnie.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Commissioners, Ken Van Busker from Belfair. Couple things, I was at a, a market a couple weekends ago down at the Belfair Elementary School, and one of the teachers came over and was talking to me and said that Principal King down there has video of folks coming out of the Sweetwater Park property. I went over there and didn't go up on it, but it's obvious that they've hacked a trail in right underneath that tree, so I don't know if, probably, probably warrants investigation. So, I just thought I'd pass that on. Also, I attended that fifth Tuesday Commissioner meeting, Mike, Commissioner Scott told you folks, and I just wanted to encourage Commissioner Jackson, Commissioner Cooper to listen to that, or watch the recording. There was a gentleman named Bruce Carter that gave a pretty good public comment about the opposition group to the gravel pit down on the shore. I would encourage you to leave that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner. Thanks for coming.
I wish there's just a little update on a few things that are happening, but I also wanted to touch on some of the stuff you were talking about. I'm very happy that you decided to get some recycling center. I was here as a commissioner when we were dealing with that the last time. It wasn't just that we didn't want it. If you remember, we had issues with insurance and everything on it, and the county wouldn't take it, but we were having oil dropped off and left out there, batteries, paint, and it wouldn't, it just, yeah, it just never stopped, and the danger for huge. And what makes it even worse is recycling is changing in our county and in our region. A lot of the recycling is no longer actually going to recycling, although it's picked up as recycling, it's going into the landfills, because the, everything's changed with the relationship with China and stuff, they're not buying it. We had some of the mills that were doing it for recycling that had shut down out in this region, so it's literally going to the landfills, which is sad, because here at the county, we have a mandate that, for those blue bins you see that people have, there's a mandate that it must be recycled and sent to recycling, even if they lose money on it. So, if you're putting it in there, it's still getting recycled, but we're looking at what to do in the future when that contract is up, because we may not have that as an opportunity anymore to have it actually go to recycling. Wanted to bring up the totem pole. I'm sure Bonnie has probably talked to you about it, but I hope you've reached out to the Watsin Tribe. That totem actually represents the potlatches that they've had here, that was brought here, the little knobs on top of the guy's head is how many potlatches occurred here, and they may be willing to help you to find a way to restore it or replace it with something else. The other thing was, is the idea, I want to let you know that the roundabout up on the top of the hill from Transit is going out to bid September, and they're looking to accept a bid October 1st, so they'll be trying to do construction on that shortly. And I showed you picture and shared a picture. You will see some signs going up for all those people who did not believe the Belfair bypasses will, that it's coming. I was able to get the state to make up signs saying that it's, it's coming for, in a construction area, and I went and got pictures of it today. So, it'll be going up there here shortly, one at, at 302, Highway 302, and the other one closer to Log Yard Road up on the top. But it is coming, and we now have proof, and they're going to put out signs saying it. And we actually had to request that they remind people that it was the bypass, because just calling it the freight corridor, people would still be saying that the Belfair bypass is not coming if not happening. So, just wanted to let you know, it is, I showed, shared the picture with you, I'll try to share with some others here afterwards.
Thank you. Yeah, Commissioner, if I could, you're absolutely right on the recycling. Spokane County had, I don't know how many thousands of yards of glass bottles that they could not recycle, so they did something inventive, and mixed it in with their asphalt to repave the roads, and, but public perception, you, I mean, it's, my wife, if I throw something that's in the blue bin or the light blue bin, she'll tell me, it doesn't go there. And I try to explain to her.
Well, they, they wanted to hang us when we were moving them out of here, and I thought that was really bad.
No, it was.
The place was packed with people, very angry, but there was nothing we could do.
No, and the neighbors were late at night having people dump stuff in those recycling bins. Oh, I, I know, so, yeah, but I, if we don't do a park, so, as long as the county still has.
Well, I like your idea of the smaller ones.
The small ones are manageable.
And control.
Yeah.
You know, if you put them in the blue boxes, they have to recycle them anyway, it's part of the contract with Mason County Harvest. Remember, Mason Penney Harvest is not Mason County.
Right.
It's just their name.
I guess all the way to these ones that started the side of the ship.
Yes, I'm aware.
No, I, it was exciting, actually. We went, we went up there, but it's, it's her, I guess, was the supporter. We went up and saw some amazing things up there, of what it could be, what it could look like, and got hooked. I still wish we could have kept it on that property, that would have been the ideal place.
Yeah, that would have made money for everybody.
And I still hope, and it's not my gig, it's yours now, but I still hope you find a way to turn it into, some of the things we talked about, it should be nice if Taylor Shellfish was selling, or it's just to do out of it, would be wonderful, and it'd be a great draw for people, with a kiosk for the history on the side. However you guys do it, it's just wonderful to have such a big piece of history not go away. And I want to remind you the same thing that happened to me, as soon as we started talking about it, it turned out that half of this county has had breakfast or lunch in that building, or, or in that house, that, before, not in front of it, for all those years. I mean, literally, everybody seems to be connected, all through the shellfish industry. It's truly historic.
Interior Shellfish is still interested in helping, and they still want to do light demonstrations and restructuring stuff, and it's getting started.
Wonderful.
Which is why it's so important to have overwatch, to do all demonstrations.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Randy.
Any other public comment? Any good to the order?
I have one question.
Sure.
At the Allen Community Celebration yesterday, I had a conversation with Representative Griffey and his father about doing a sidewalk the length of Allen. Excuse me. And he asked if we would be willing to, excuse me, if we would be willing to be the lead agency on that, since there's no other government here. So, I told him I thought we probably would be, but I would mention it to you.
Sure.
He was going to try to make the meeting tonight, but, you know, obviously couldn't, but.
Definitely put it on another meeting agenda.
Yeah.
He mentioned it to us at The Ridge.
Right.
Event we went to, and he's done a lot for us.
Yes, he has.
Especially.
And Dell.
Dell has done a lot for us, for sure, so, yeah, it's, it's a hard one not to consider one, considering who's asking.
That's the way I felt, and I thought you'd want to know.
Yep. Any other good to the order?
Everybody's good to the order. You had a item, you had an item on your, something about the racing vehicle down there, the new region, all that. Well, we used to provide ambulance service at that event, in Charlotte, same thing airport. Mostly whole-hum stuff. Somebody in their audience had turned over something like that. One day, somebody had taken a, one of those racing cars with a hydromatic transmission, but what they failed to consider was they put one hell of a big engine in front of it and blew it up and blew the leg off the driver. And it was quite an, quite an event, this blow up.
Yeah. Thanks for that, chief. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for participating.